All right, good morning or good afternoon, sorry. Welcome to the regular Planning Commission for the Toluahoma City. I am Chairman Paul Schwerin here to call this meeting to order. Determination of a quorum and we have a huge echo.
Turn the TVs down. Do we have a remote for them?
We'll give Mr. Luthy a second and we'll get started.
Well, that sounds like it's in the P.
All right. Any luck? Maybe not.
Good deck, I'm.
All right, we do have a quorum with five members present. Mr. Sellers and Ms. McGee are absent.
I wonder what it is, I guess.
All right.
You can't, they can't hear it on TV if you turn off the microphones.
Turn the TV off.
Yeah, I'm not sure it's not coming out of the ceiling.
TUA controls all the audio.
Gotcha, all right. Well, let's push forward and we'll see how it goes. At this time, I'd like everyone to rise for the please leave the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, Mr. Sellers is present. Take a minute. Welcome, Marvin.
Thank you.
Read and approve the minutes from the October 20th meeting. Entertained a motion for the minutes as written.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Mr. Rice.
Second.
Second from Mayor Seaborn. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, I'll call a vote. All in favor of the minutes is written, aye.
Aye.
Opposed and abstained. All right, minutes are approved with six to zero. And that was Rice. Item number five, general public comments for items not on the agenda. At this time, I'd like to invite anyone from the public to come forward and speak on any items that are not on tonight's agenda but in the purview of the Planning Commission. The come forward and be recognized. Mr. Dean, you're recognized. If you're talking about the comprehensive plan, it's on the agenda.
I just want to double check because I talked to Mr. Luthy and he indicated that that wasn't open as a public hearing item, so to state what I wanted to state now.
Yeah, go ahead.
That way we'll get it over.
You're an author, so I'd less you would recognize you.
Appreciate that.
You're recognized, go ahead.
Yeah, Chuck Dean.
Three minutes.
Chuck Dean, 419 Albemarle Drive, Toluoma, and I'm a member of this Community Plan Development Committee or the committee that was the Community Plan Development Committee. And I just want to state the following for the record, that on October, excuse me, November 5th, 2025, the Planning Commission had a study session to review the CPDC-generated 2045 Toluoma Comprehensive Plan. At the time of the study session, several changes were made to this plan by the Planning Commission. The plan attached to the agenda consists of those changes. In case it is not discussed by the Planning Commission tonight, I wanted to make the public aware that some of the items which were in the 2045 Toluoma Comprehensive Plan, which was submitted by the CPDC, have been deleted or modified by the Planning Commission. I don't have time to review those changes in detail, but some of the items include deletion of development feature requirements for off-street parking in residential areas and for where planned development districts or PUDs can be located. The Planning Commission also deleted an entire subsection about TAEDC, which interestingly was one of the many elements the CPDC derived directly from the Think Toluoma 2040 Plan, which the Planning Commission approved in 2022. All that said, I appreciate that the Planning Commission has taken up this plan and look forward to the process going forward to include BOMA. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Dean. For the record, I would like to include the email that Mr. Dean sent to all of us into the minutes for tonight. Thank you. Anyone else from the general public comments? Moving on, number six, reports from commissioners and staff. Mr. Luthy, I'd like to recognize you at this time.
At this time, I don't have any extra items to report. The GIS map is complete. It'll be going on the website ideally this week. I was going to get on the website last week, ran into some issues with the data and it was not cooperating, but I've gotten that resolved so that I am still planning to get that on the website this week. It's ready to go. I just have to figure out the online hosting side of it. I haven't worked with that too much, so I'm trying to iron that out and get that online. And then outside of that, the Board of Mayor and Alderman will only have one meeting in November and one meeting in December. So items that you reviewed at your October meeting that had to go to the Board of Mayor and Alderman will be first reading in November. Second reading will be in December. And then items from this meeting in November will have their first reading in December and their second reading in January due to the singular meetings in November and December.
Did the BOMA not meet last week, is it?
We did, but we won't meet again next week.
Okay, so the.
And then two other items. Your calendar for 2026 will be presented to you at the December meeting for your review so we can get that up on our website before the start of the new year. That'll be the time to raise concern if any of the dates. I should be able to catch all of the holidays or any days that will have to adjust those Monday night meetings. But if there's anything that I missed, please let me know. And then we still have to look at two of our members and your terms are expired that will need to be replaced. I know there was some talk about extending those, but we'll need to figure out where we're going with that. And then the election of a chair and a vice chair. I know there's talk of extending that as well, but we'll need an official statement on that one so that I have something to.
So on that, our city attorney had started drafting something for that and I'm going to get with him in the next week or two and hopefully we can sort it out. Might want to talk with you about that as well. One of the things that's happened with this is our rules say that we're supposed to have one appointee every year, five appointments, one every five, one every year. And right now somehow that's gotten off and we've got like two or three people expiring all at the same time, so I'd like to straighten that out as well as the term question. So we'll be working on that.
But outside of that.
Expect that in December?
I hope so.
Normal meeting for December. I don't foresee needing to adjust that date or time. And then for the couple of commissioners who have not yet received their iPad devices from me, Marvin, I have yours ready and I'll get it to you by the end of the meeting. And then for the mayor and Chairman Schwer and Commissioner McGee, I'm working on those ones. If you could swing by my office at some point to finish the setup on those and then I'm working with our IT department to get those finished, they'll be ready to go for you.
Mr. Luthy, I'll just wait for you to contact me online.
For sure.
All right. Training? Do we want to start, do we want to schedule some training, the annual training?
Yes, I'm working with Robin on looking at setting up a training. One that'd be more general that would involve Planning Commission and BOMA and then one that'd be more specific for Planning Commission. So yes, I'm looking at getting some training set up through MTAS. They do have some programs, I need to get some dates from them. So when we do our 2026 calendar, we should also expect to see some information on training and we can get some dates set aside for that. I would prefer to do the training, ones that offer remote training. I think that would be a little easier for everyone involved for scheduling another day of the week to be here. But if not, I'll let you know, but that is my first priority, is something that would be more flexible for your schedules.
All right, thank you, that'd be good. All right, anything from the commission? All right, moving on. Approval of the agenda, entertain a motion for the agenda approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, I'll call a vote. All in favor of the agenda as written, aye.
Aye.
Opposed and abstained. All right, agenda is passed six to zero. There is no old business, we'll move on to new business, subdivision plats, these are public hearings. The Boggs Cook Road Final Plat, proposed final plat to create two new lots of record located at 394 Cook Road. The applicant is Mr. Danny J. Boggs. I would invite the applicant to come forward and speak on this at this time, if available. If not, these are, these are public hearings, so I'd like to invite the public to speak on this. Anyone with concerns or comments of the Boggs Cook Road Final Plat, please come forward at this time and be recognized. Seeing none, we'll move to the staff report, Mr. Luthy.
I would just like to advise the chair, the applicant is required to attend these hearings. If the applicant is not here, the item is to be automatically deferred for 30 days till the next meeting. If the applicant is not present at that meeting, you are required to send a negative recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman to deny the application. So if the applicant is not present to speak, we'll have to defer the item.
All right, then the Boggs Cook Road Final Plat is deferred to the December meeting? Is that procedural or do we need a vote on that?
It's, it's a requirement automatically is deferred if they're not present.
All right. I, I. I feel like we've been inconsistent in that in the past, but I definitely like that approach, so we'll, let's do that moving forward. All right, item number two, Denby Acres Final Plat, proposed final plat to create three new lots of record located at 139 Sullivan Lane. The applicant are Ms. Stacy A. and Billy G. Denby. Sir, you're recognized.
My name's Billy Denby.
Okay.
I don't have a list, are we talking about the first two?
The, it's the 139, I think it's the one that's off the road.
Okay, yes, sir. Two lots splitting up for the grandkids.
If you don't have anything much to say about it, that's fine, we can continue on. If there's questions, we can, we can, we can address them at that time. But I will, I will, you know, it's a public hearing, so if anybody else would like to speak on this, they can be recognized as well. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. You have seat too, but you'll be back up in just a second, so I don't know. The, seeing none, I'll close this public hearing and move to staff report, Mr. Luthy.
Yeah, this final plat is before you to create two new lots of record on part of the 76 acre parcel that's currently addressed at 139 Sullivan Lane. These two new parcels will be located off of Sullivan Lane itself. I did contact the Coffey County Roads Department to make sure that Coff, that Sullivan Lane is not a private driveway or an easement, it is actually a county maintained road. I got confirmation from them that they do maintain that road because our subdivision regulations has requirements on how many lots can be served with an easement. But I did get confirmation in writing from Coffey County that that is a county road. And they did change, the sign has been changed from a blue private drive to an actual road sign. So it's, we're checked out on that front. Only other planning consideration for this one, the garbage bins must be brought to the entrance of Sullivan Lane if they're to be collected. There's already residents out there and I believe those residents already do that. So there's anything out of the ordinary for this part of town, but because it's a county maintained road, but the parcels are within the city, our city boundary and the UGB is kind of, goes back and forth on each other there. So the garbage bins will have to be brought out to Sullivan Lane per the Public Works Department's comment. And then I do, staff recommends approval of this final plat with the following condition. This condition is from our Fire Marshal Nick Kimbrough. The existing dry hydrant drafting pond was not designed to support two additional dwellings. In order to put two additional dwellings on this site, residential sprinkler system will need to be installed in each of the dwellings in accordance with NFPA or a new fire hydrant will need to be installed since pond is approved under a previous administration is not accepted means of fire protection, water supply under the 2021 IFC Section 5075. One, the options of a sprinkler system or hydrant are the only two options at this point. This comment, I felt it was important to have on the approval. However, the actual review of whether or not a hydrant or sprinkler system is proposed will be part of the building permit.
All right, thank you for that. With that, entertaining motion?
Motion to approve, subject to staff comments.
All right, motion for Mr. Sellers.
Second.
Second for Mr. Rice. Any discussion on this? With that, all in favor of the Denby X's Final Plat for, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And abstained. All right, moving on, Denby Meadows Final Plat. Proposed Final Plat to create three new lots of record located at 139 Sullivan Lane. The applicants are Stacy A. and Billy G. Denby. And the applicant is here and. For the record, just state your name and kind of briefly what you're doing, just same thing, procedural. Yeah, that's true.
Name's Billy Denby here on the three lots.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, this is a public, public hearing, so anyone else from the public that wants to speak on this at this time, please come forward. Seeing none, close the public hearing. Mr. Luthy for the staff report.
This final plat before you serves to create three new lots of record. This is part of the 76.2 acres tract located at 139 Sullivan Lane. However, the previous two that you looked at were off of Sullivan Lane. These two will be on another part of the property that is actually served off of Short Springs Road. All three of these lots will have road frontage on Short Springs Road. This one was brought before RDAC and there was no extraneous planning commission comments on this one. It's just pretty standard.
All right, thank you, Ms. Luthy. Entertained a motion?
Motion to approve, motion approved from Mr. Hall.
I'll second.
Second from Mayor Seaborn. Any discussion on this one? All right, seeing no discuss, or call the vote, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Motion passes six to zero. All right. The Wells Jaeger, Wells Jaeger Street Final Plat. Proposed Final Plat to create three new lots of record located at Zero Washington Street. The applicant is Mr. Bert Wells. Invite the applicant to come forward at this time. Same thing?
If the applicant is not present, the subdivision plat will be deferred and it will have to be reviewed at the next meeting.
All right, so being that the applicant is not present, we will defer this one to the December meeting at that time. Wells Jaeger Final, Street Final Plat is deferred till December.
Are you sure everybody's hearing?
Yeah.
Maybe they just didn't hear.
Say that a little louder just in case.
You guys can't hear, okay, so I thought the, I guess the microphones are not working out there maybe? All right, so this is the Wells, Wells Jaeger Street Final Plat. I'd like to invite the applicant to come forward at this time. No applicant from the Wells. Okay, thank you. All right, with that, I'll defer to the December meeting. And we will move on. To rezoning requests, Hart and Family Partners Rezone Requests, a request for the Planning Commission to provide comment to the Board of Mayor and Alderman regarding the rezoning of Zero Wilson Avenue. The applicant is Hart and Family Partners. I'd like to invite the applicant to come forward at this time. He's here.
Joel Lester Hart, Rio Team, 2011 Country Club Drive. I feel my application is pretty self-explanatory. We are still getting a number of calls for affordable housing in the lots we have throughout this town. I've got about 44 and I think it's time to do something with them and we ask to go from R1 to R2 to shrink the side setbacks and put a little home in there. So really pretty much what I've got.
All right, thank you, Ms. Lester.
Yep, thank you.
All right, this is a public hearing, I'd like to invite anyone from the public to speak at this time on the. Lost my agenda. No, the Hart and Family Partners Rezon Request. Seeing none, I will move to the staff comment, Mr. Luthy.
The applicant is requesting a rezone on this property so that it can be subdivided. I did see that when I was reviewing this one, and if you look at the MLS tax suite screen grab for you, there are already lots there that were shown. I think the applicant's planning to utilize that configuration of lots that was already divided, but this parcel is currently sitting in C2, so need to be rezoned to residential to be utilized that way.
All right, thank you. This is a entertaining motion from the commission?
Motion to send a favorable recommendation to the BOMA.
Motion from Mr. Hall. Second. Second from Mr. Rice. All right, any discussion on this? Mr. Sellers, you recognize?
Go ahead. I was trying to find the overlay for this property and I was having a hard time. What is the overlay of this property?
Page 43.
You mean what designation?
Yeah, the land use.
Right now, well, it's C2, but it's in R1, low resident, low density residential.
If you zoom in on your future land use map, if you look at where it says Maple Hill, right next to it, there's a vertical word circle. This chunk is right under the C and circle. Page 50, I think.
This brings up a comment, I would like to request that when we bring up our land use map, that we get a zone, a zoom in like for like several miles around it and only show that part of it instead of the whole, the whole map when we're doing these reviews, because you zoom in here, it's hard to figure out where you're at.
So with that future land use map, if I zoom it in, it, it's pretty grainy. I would need to.
That's why I'm hoping you can use your new GIS.
So the GIS we have is for zoning. I do not currently have the 2011 future land use map in a GIS format that I can manipulate that way. I have saved PDFs of it, but the PDFs that I have access to are the ones that I include in the meetings. I can dig through some of the older files that I've got to see if I can find something, but what you see is what I have access to, so.
That would be beneficial, because that, that land use map is almost worthless.
I'll let, I'll let you decide on how much effort it is, but like if it was, if we even had some kind of like grid where it was just, you know, even quad, even, even a quad of the city, that might be better than nothing or maybe divide by, you know.
Am I right, it's currently.
Sixteen different squares.
Was that right, the land use map shows it's residential?
Yes, sir.
Low density?
Yeah.
But it's zone C2 currently.
Yeah.
They're asking to change it to. Well, that's, that was my, that was my next question. It's being requested to change to R3 instead of R1 and I'm just wondering why.
Because the lots there are currently already defined.
Yeah, but they would still meet R1 definition, wouldn't they? They won't.
They're only 50 feet wide.
Too narrow. It's the narrowness of lots, okay? That's why you won't. But R3 would allow, and I'm not saying you're going to do it, but R3 would allow apartments in there, right? Or condos or townhouses. Wouldn't C3 be more appropriate and still give them the off, the back sets that's needed?
So.
The overlay shows residential and it's currently zone commercial, so.
That was wrong.
Residential would be more congruent, it's not low density residential, but.
But we can't get the setbacks with R1 or R2, I guess, right? To allow single family dwellings there.
So it's already been subdivided?
Yes, sir. Whether or not the lots are taxed individually is between the applicant, the owner and the county. But we currently have, if you look on Tennessee Property Viewer, the current parcel data, they are individual parcels.
It's odd how that, over time, that stuff happens.
I've seen, this, this happens frequently, where lots will be subdivided. Somebody will own a parcel and then when you look at the legal description for that parcel at the property assessor data, it'll say lots 55, 56, 57 of a sub, whatever subdivision, and it'll be taxed as one parcel, but it's actually three parcels that were subdivided 40, 50, 60 years ago. That is still, they're still legally separated lots, but they're taxed as one parcel and, and some people will treat them as one parcel, but they still are legally distinct parcel and you can check our, the Tennessee Property Viewer website and see those parcels, how they are currently divided.
I will comment that I think that like the, our future land use map and the fact that that's all low density, that's something that we need to look into basically, because that is, that meets the rest of the definitions that we've been talking about for high density stuff. It's on a, it's on a major arterial, it's close to, it's, it's close to businesses in walking distance within things like schools and things like that. So I mean, I definitely think this is appropriate zoning for that. Just our map maybe need to reflect that.
Question for you, your plan was to build single family dwellings on each lot, right? Not, they're not going to build high density in there. The requirement for this is because of the setback requirements. And I don't have a problem with that, that's what's required to get it in there, it'd be like getting a zoning waiver, whatever we call it, but.
My, my, my point, single family housing, apartments, whatever it may be, it meets the depth, if we're going to, if we're looking at some high density things, that's appropriate for the area.
Just putting R3 right in the middle of a bunch of R1.
It's not in the middle, it's right next to a, it's right next to a highway.
Everything around it, everywhere else around it's all R1.
It's right next to a highway.
I will say I reviewed the surrounding lots when I got this. The surrounding lots are also non-compliant with R1, they're all 65 foot wide, smaller lots, very similar to the ones that you're looking at here on Wilson Avenue. There's the block between Northview and Central Avenue and then Central Avenue and Circle Drive. They're all pretty much exactly the same, 50 to 65 feet wide, about 100, 150, maybe 200 feet deep with a single family house on them.
Problem with it, I just wanted to question that if the reasoning for the R3 was because of the setbacks.
So normally if a lot had, you know, there's some areas of legal non-conformity. So for example, these lots would be too small for R1, but they would be considered legal non-conforming if they were already R1. The problem is going and rezoning them to a non-conforming zone, we can't do. So the only way that they would be, we'd be able to rezone these residential is you put them in R3 because that's what they would fit under. If we put them under R1, they would, we couldn't do that because we'd be assigning them a zone that's not compliant with their current size.
And right next to it is a business, correct?
Yeah, it's Brookdale. Yeah. Which is a skilled care or something.
Yeah, yeah. That's why I thought C3 would have been appropriate too, because I think they could, because they still built single family dwellings and met the requirement under C3, because they put C3 next to C2. That's what I was, that's my question.
So the difficulty with C3 for single families is that the front setback for C3 in single family is 35 feet, which is the same for R3, but the side setbacks are five feet and the side setbacks for C3 are 10 feet. So you'd be losing. So you'd be losing ten feet of lot width, which on a fifty-foot wide lot is, would remove the product, the single-family product that would need to go on them. They cannot operate it with ten-foot setbacks, but it can with five.
That's good. Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm good.
Alright. Any discussion? You, you, did you get?
I'm good.
Okay. Anything? Alright. Alright, with that, I'll call a vote. Uh, all in favor of sending a favorable recommendation to
We have a motion.
Yes, we do.
Okay, sorry, couldn't remember.
It was from um, Hall and Rice to send a favorable recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman. Um, all in favor to send a favorable, favorable uh, favorable recommendation to the um, to the Board of Mayor and Alderman for the Hart and Family Partners rezon request? Uh, aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? And abstained? Alright, that motion passes. Uh, six to zero. Send a favorable recommendation on that. Uh, thank you. Item number two, Ryan Denby rezon request, a request uh, for the Planning Commission to provide uh, comment to the, to the Board of Mayor and Alderman to regarding the rezoning of Zero East Deckard Street. The applicant is Mr. Ryan Denby. Um, and I'd like to invite the applicant to come forward at this time, or representative. Sir?
Oh, Ryan looking to change this from C D, C two to C D three?
Are you Ryan, Ryan Denby?
Yes, sir.
Alright.
Ryan Denby.
Alright. Alright. C two to C three? Alright.
Yes, sir.
Alright. Anything else? Alright. Alright, thank you. Alright, with that, this is a public hearing, so I'd like to invite the um, anyone from the public at this time to, to speak on this rezon request. Alright, seeing none, I will move to the staff comments. Mr. Luthy.
Yeah. Uh, this property on uh, Deckard Street, East Deckard Street is currently zoned C two, commercial. Um, you have seen quite a few properties already come before you on Deckard Street to be rezoned. Um, this is one of the areas with quite a few single-family lots that got rezoned from whatever they were previously to uh, C two, commercial, but they actually have a single-family home on them. Uh, this lot is actually vacant at the time. Um, however, its viability for commercial use is not as high as its viability for single-family use. Um, it's right up against some houses. Um, but it may still be commercial. Um, this part of town, it's up against the uh, train tracks. To the north on Deckard Street is some commercial use. To the south on Deckard Street is residential properties. Um, this property could be used residentially. It could also fit with the um, current area of it being used commercially. Uh, therefore, the applicant has requested the C three zone. Um, in the application, the applicant has stated that their intent is to uh, subdivide the parcel and then use it for residential uh, single-family homes. Um, and rezoning to C three would allow them to do that. Um, but also because of its proximity to commercial, if it made more sense to develop it commercial, that would also be a potential uh, avenue for the owner of that property, once it's rezoned.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Luthy. Alright, entertain a motion?
Will send a favorable rec- recommendation to the board?
Motion for Mr. Sellers.
Second.
Second for Mr. Mr. Klein? Yeah, okay. I didn't, I, I thought it was you just spoke up, but I wasn't looking at you. Alright, uh, any discussion on this one?
So, so I have a quick general comment. This is Samuel, and you were there at our board meeting. But we've had applications coming without reasons for rezoning listed on the application. And we've had BMA members say that they really want to see that reason listed on the application. I don't know if you've started trying to enforce. I assume you have, but just wanted to remind you of that and inform this board of that, that uh, we had board members that felt like it wasn't a complete application if they didn't list the reason in the box that says reason for rezoning. And which we've heard tonight.
From the applicant's comment?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
But there's a block on the form for that and we always hear it, cause we always ask them, but that wasn't getting transmitted to BOMA.
Okay.
So it's just a general comment.
It's a good comment. I don't, but in general, I don't think they really need a reason, right? Is it?
It's on our form.
Okay.
The, the form asks for a reason. What they state in that form is not binding in any way. Um, and actually you are encouraged, if not required, to consider all potential uses of a rezon because the applicant could say one thing and then do another. Um, and it's your job as the, to kind of determine whether or not you're willing to, I don't want to say take that risk, but, but to, to uh,
That's what it is.
Honor that information, but uh, yeah, the box is there to, and, and most of the time, when someone comes in to discuss it, they come and sit in my office and then they talk about it with me and then they fill out the form. So they've already had that discussion and telling me what they want to do. Say, most time don't even feel the need to put it there. Um, that's why in the staff report, I always try to indicate what the applicant said to me um, and what they communicate that they want to do so that you can kind of get a glimpse of that conversation that happened before the meeting.
The, the form makes no it, it, it sounds actually pretty firm there about the um, but it's, it is non-binding. I mean, I, I mean, I assume that the that's being discussed with the, with the applicant when they're filling it out that it isn't, but I don't know if we want to put that on the form or not, that it's not binding. I don't know. That's not, that's a worship discussion. Just thinking. Um, alright, anything else? I, I was looking at the you know, per kind of Marvin's comment on the last one, the, it looks like on the, is this, this is in our future u- use map, that looks like it's in the yellow is the, the medium-density residential. Okay, so, so we don't have any concerns there. Okay, good.
Alright, well, if there's no other comments, then I'll call a vote. Uh, all in favor to send a favorable recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman for the Ryan Denby rezon request? Aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? And abstained? Alright, that motion passes uh, six to zero. And then we go on to section C, the uh, twenty forty-five comprehensive plan. A request by the mayor and Board of Alderman, uh, request by the Board of Mayor and Alderman for the Planning Commission to review and present the twenty forty-five comprehensive plan to the Board of Mayor and Alderman for approval.
I don't know how long we're gonna be on this. I didn't know if it's possible to go into the BOZA or
Um, let's finish this first. I don't know how long this is really gonna take, but
I didn't know, okay, sorry.
The um,
Well, then I'll proceed.
Yeah, I mean, this will be an open item, I'm pretty sure, like when we but uh, I, I can't, you know. Um, with that, I'll just uh, I'll turn it over to the staff report for Mr. Luthy and then we can have some small discussion and then we'll see where we can come up with a plan of action.
Um, this item, I received uh, comments and uh, requested changes at a study session. I implemented those in the document. I sent the document back out for review. Um, you've got it. Uh, on the procedures of how this document will proceed, like advised the board on, I did some research on how this will proceed. This is a Planning Commission document. The Planning Commission currently, um, unless the Board of Mayor and Alderman chooses to reinstate the CPDC, uh, this is the Planning Commission's document. You are the only ones able to make changes to it at this time. Uh, once you feel the document is in a satisfactory state, you can send that document to the Board of Mayor and Alderman. Board and Mayor and Alderman will get a choice to either approve it or send it back to the Planning Commission um, for you to address. They can send comments with it, but those comments are up to Planning Commission discretion to decide to include or not. Um, and then once those comments are addressed, you can send it back to the Board and Mayor, Board of Mayor and Alderman for their consideration again. Um, but while at this meeting, you will have the option to make changes and edits. Um, and you can, until you hand it over to the Board of Mayor and Alderman, uh, the BOMA will not have the option to make changes and edits. Um, they're simply reviewing and either approving and codifying your document or sending it back to you uh, for more work.
Okay. First question, then I'll go first. What about public input? When do we include the public to review this?
So we've, it now would be the time um, to ask for comment. It's been published on the website. It's been published on uh, believe social media. I have to check to make sure. Um, I reached out to Lyle, I don't know if it got on there. Or if I, I think he might have emailed me back and asked for a follow-up and I left him unread, so I might have forgotten about that one, but um, it's gone around. It's, people were aware that it was gonna be at this meeting. Um,
Okay.
You know, we, we, we have it open for public comment. Um, I don't know if
How, how is it open for public comment?
There, it's a public meeting. They can be here to comment on it.
Okay. I mean, I didn't hold a public hearing for it, so.
Correct, but it's an item the, the public, there was already one member of the public that commented on it and anybody else could have been
And that would be the time for an ask for public comments. Right?
Alright, anyway, sorry to interrupt you.
However, you know, with the way that it was currently set up and, and, and from the BOMA and how the they requested of the CPDC prepare the plan and pass it to you, I, there wasn't really an indication of having public charrettes or public work sessions involved with this. Um, I know there was, that was heavily involved in the twenty forty-five plan. Um, but that was quite a different endeavor than this one. Um, this one drew a lot of information from that plan and it was presented to you. Um, but I don't believe we have any plans for large-scale public um, charrette-style comments or public workshops. Um, I think at this time, it's, it's just presented to the Planning Commission. Um, and I think at the direction of, of the BOMA and the members that passed it to you and then wanted to uh, kind of encourage this project along to get this document reviewed. Um, I don't think it would be in their intention for us to hold a bunch more delays and, and public meetings. I think they're ready for Planning Commission to pass it on and, or make their comments and make their dressman, dressings and pass it on to the BOMA.
So, okay. I mean, here's, here's what I would like to do and then the board can argue with me. Um, I, I would like to take another essentially stab at this and, and incorporate any other comments, stuff like that. Make sure that we get some formatting issues right, label the figures. I think that there's some inconsistency in the headers and summary and stuff like that, that I think we need to, we need to dwell on a little bit. Um, and then I would like to essentially at least put on the agenda for public comment. One, in, if that's December, great. If it's January, great. Um, and then at that, after we take that public comment and, and incorporate that, then we, we would pass it to the Board of Mayor and Alderman. Does that sound like a reasonable approach?
Sounds reasonable, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, so, so I just, I actually meant to check on this, Samuel, I don't know if you meant to check on, you know, we, we had the BOMA kind of directing the Planning Commission and I didn't argue about that too much, but technically speaking, if it's the Planning Commission's document, I don't think the Board of Mayor and Alderman can order you to complete it. I mean, there is an existing comprehensive plan. Uh, and I think it's nice to take their encouragement to get it done, uh, which I support. But I don't think we have to act on it tonight.
Yeah, no, I didn't, I didn't, I've I definitely didn't, I didn't, definitely didn't take it that way. Um, I took it that they were directing us to provide them with a plan. Um, basing and using this as a, as a, as a, as a, you know, a very far along draft. Alright. Just discussion, any?
I, I've got, I've got no problem with waiting maybe one more month. People want to come up and bring public comments in the next meeting, they can. I don't think we need to drag, drag it out much longer than
No, I sort of expected to see more people here tonight to come in after what happened with the first one, but I think maybe maybe this was not as content, contentious as the first one.
I don't think it was advertised either. Okay, um.
It was advertised, yeah.
I, I don't think it was as aver- eh, eh, like I, I
We, we didn't make a big show about it.
I acknowledge that it was advertised, yes. Sorry, I didn't mean to try to, alright, um, okay. So let's, let's I would like to fire you off some comments as well, um, from, from just my comments and, and, and put them in there. I mean, I don't have, I don't have any means to edit the document. I think you're the only one that has the means to edit a document, so um, let's um, I want to incorporate my feedback to you with that and then if anybody else would like to do that too, let's, let's feed it through Luthy.
And you sent us the most recent version in the last week in an email, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, and then in December, we can take up public comments on it and then we will incorporate all of that in one, one swoop and then we can get this rolling.
Sounds good.
Alright. I don't think I need a motion for that. If there's no other discussion, I will close this item. Alright. Item closed. And next meeting is Monday, December fifteenth, so that's what we're shooting for. Um, and at this time, the um, the Planning Commission meeting is adjourned. Give me a second to
I, I may have put it at the wrong meeting, but I had a variance request.
It's, you're next. Hang on.
You're at the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Yeah, we're, we're, I'm about to open. I'm, I'm about to call to order um, the Board of Zoning Appeals' regular zoning meeting agenda, so. Thank you for your patience.
Alright, uh, we'll call them, call to order this meeting, um, and read and approve the minutes from the October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five BOZA meeting. Um, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion for the minutes as written.
Motion approved.
Motion to approve from Mr. Sellers. Second from Mr. Seaborn. And all in favor of the minutes as written? Aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? And abstained? Alright, minutes is written. Uh, six to zero. Approval of the agenda. Uh, uh, I mean, a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve from Mr. Sellers. Second.
Second.
Second from Mr. Rice. Um, vote on the approval of the agenda as written? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstained? Agenda is approved as written, six to zero. No old business. The new business is the Brent Gregory Vance request, a request from the applicant Brent Gregory for the BOZA to consider granting a variance for the property location at four-two-three Albemarle Drive. Um, and I would like to invite the applicant forward at this time. Thank you for your patience.
My name's Brett. Yep, four-twenty-three Albemarle Drive, local contractor and builder. Um, I just have a simple request. You know, the rear setback where I live is twenty-five feet. I'm just requesting eight more feet to give my family some shade for a covered porch. Uh, we pretty much meet all the criteria on the variance request form, so I can share those with you. Yeah, I'm sure you have a copy, but that's all I'm asking for is eight feet. Uh, we've got a sloped lot. It's a corner lot. Uh, we had to bring in a good amount of fill dirt to make our lot buildable in the rear, so when we did that, we actually lost space from doing so. Um, all we're wanting to build is just a attached shed roof. It ties onto my house, but it would encroach by eight feet on the rear setback.
Alright, thank you. Alright, and this, this is a public hearing as well, so anyone from the public that's left wants to speak on this? I don't see anyone, so I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Luthy?
Um, as far as staff comment on rezoning requests like this, um, I'm only making sure that the applicant completes the application and provides reasoning. Um, and they, they provided their reasons, but I can't advise the BOMA on what they should or should not deem a sufficient reason, so uh, the applicant is, the application was complete. Um, each section was filled out to satisfaction of the planning and uh, development department, so it is up to the Board of Zoning Appeals to review and determine if those reasons are sufficient.
Can I ask questions? So, so who, who, what's, what backs up on the backside of your property?
It's a three-hundred-and-fifty-acre cornfield.
That's what I thought, so I was trying to remember where you were with her.
Yeah, it's at the very back of Making Manor subdivision.
Right.
My neighbors are fine with it. It's gonna be just an open structure, just basically a shed roof.
You're not gonna run power out to that corner or anything?
Just giving my kids some shade.
Sure.
I've got a three-year-old and a one-year-old. We can't even use this place.
Yeah.
Alright, entertain a motion.
I'm likely motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second from Mr. Hall. Seaborn Hall. Discussion on this.
Sorry, I already jumped into discussion already.
Alright. Understand the sentiment. And the, and the, all the verbiage looks good on the application. I, I do question whether or not this is a natural feature and topologically appropriate. Um, mostly because what's keeping anybody else from making these same claims down that same lot? But anyway, any other comments? Alright. The
I feel, I feel the same. It's not something that is necessary, something that would be enjoyable. Looks like the house takes up most of the usable square footage of the lot. It's not necessarily due to drop-off or anything. I mean, the back of the house is right up, kind of against the buildable section of the property.
I mean, there's four, there are four criteria, right?
It seems like a few months ago, in a similar case, we rezoned the property to make it work.
I don't think that's gonna work here.
Oh, yeah, it might work here now. Not, not in Making Manor, probably.
It's, it's pretty well. We, we were, so to, to answer your question, to, to the, uh, we, we rezoned the property because the, the the zoning of the property was inconsistent with what was around it. Um, and we, we were able to rezon it into like an R two. I don't remember the specifics, but we were able to rezon it into, into something that was more akin to the rest of the neighborhood. This neighborhood is definitely R one, um, by any stretch of the imagination. This neighborhood is definitely R one, um, by any stretch of the imagination.
Who would be harmed?
Well, that, that's, that's the, that's the, that's the main thing is like, that's, I, I, I don't think anyone would be harmed. Um, I do think that the, that we are, based on the, what was required to be built on that lot by the HOA and whatnot, then I, I think that we're, we're, we're in a gray area. Um, I do wish that I had the four criteria, cause, I mean, that, that, we didn't get the, we, we had typically in the past gotten at least a little summary, a summary header sheet on this, but, uh, we don't have that for this one.
The findings of fact that you're looking for, um, those are the boxes that the applicant filled in.
Okay.
You have to make a finding that it's due to a particular physical surroundings, um, though it's not applicable to uh, property in the same district, that's not authorizing activities in his own district, other than those permitted, those are the findings of fact that have to be made. Um, I as staff feel it's a little encroaching for me to decide whether or not that finding of fact is satisfactory or not. Um, I think that's, I would like to leave that up to, to you, uh, all as the BOZA, Board of Zoning Appeals, to decide if, if those have, those findings of fact are satisfactory or not. Um, I'm simply making sure that the applicant provides a finding for you. Um, I, I don't feel that's appropriate for me to interject my opinion on whether or not it's enough.
I, I think there's a difference of a, there's a, there's a, wh- what I think that the staff should be doing here for us, basically, um, is, should be not apply, not a, not, not giving an opinion whether or not, which way this is gonna go or what needs to happen. But should be validating that what is stated by the applicant is truly findings in fact. Like, is the lot, i- i- is the, is the claims that he's making here, is that, is that true with, with the codes and, and public works and then what's on record and things like that? Um, I don't think, I don't think that we should be very validating that this stuff that he said here is true on the spot, for sure. Um, does that make sense? I'm not, I'm not trying to fault you, I'm just like, that's what I think we need to move forward.
Things for rezoning requests though are matters of judgment by default.
Yeah. But. Yeah, I mean, I think you could concur or, you know, but not without providing a recommendation. I don't know, um, this is up for discussion.
If you were asking my opinion?
Yes.
I reviewed the property that the applicant is requesting a variance on and found that I do believe that this property is smaller than some of the surrounding properties due to its placement at the, uh, cul-de-sac. Um, I also found that the applicant was restricted by the HOA on a certain square footage that the home had to be. Um, which, if following that, the applicant couldn't have made the house smaller if they wanted to. Uh, one of the discussions that I had with the applicant was about the actual size of the home. Uh, my logic behind that discussion was if the applicant was required to do a two-thousand-square-foot house and they built a twenty-one-hundred-square-foot house, I could see that requirement dictating the size of the home. But if the applicant built a three-thousand-square-foot house, then the house's size was dictated by the desires of the applicant and I believe in my discussions that the home was right about that two-thousand-square-foot size, so the home itself could not have been made smaller and still been able to have been built under the homeowners association. Um, so because of that, um, I felt that the claims that the applicant were making were correct in that this lot is smaller, they were required to build a home of a certain size. Um, and, you know, with the surrounding features that the lot backed up against, I do believe that the harm would be minimal. Um, I cannot speak for the residents of Macon Manor, but, um, in terms of, of general best zoning practices, um, I don't believe that it would be encumbering to any other property owner.
Okay, yeah, I mean, you don't need to comment on that, I just kind of, eh, are the, are the applicant's claims accurate and, and you believe to be, you know, bounded to some extent, is kind of, I think probably appropriate. I, I, I'm, and I am, I will apologize to put you on the spot at the time, cause I, if I would have had this and been in town, I would have probably called you about it.
Mr. Chairman? Can I ask a question?
You may.
On behalf of Public Works Department, I don't know exactly where this lot is located, but I know at the back of Macon Manor, there is a pretty sizable drain that runs behind some of those homes, is that within this setback?
That's my neighbor.
Okay.
To the right, he's four-twenty-five.
Okay.
He goes behind him and the, uh, the W-looking house to the right of him.
Okay.
But no, it doesn't.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. All right. Any discussion, sorry, I mean, I'm kinda. All right, all right, with that, um, you know, I will call the vote on, on the, um, the Brent Gregory variance request, um, all in favor of approval of the, the variance request, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, um, and abstained? All right, uh, the motion passes, uh, five to one with Mr. Rice opposing. All right, thank you, um, and with that, uh, the next meeting is Monday, December fifteenth at four-thirty, um, and we are adjourned, thanks.